All right, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting of the City Commission, a joint meeting of the City Commission, the Planning Commission, and the DDA Board. This is going to be a little unorthodox because really this is a workshop, but we wanted as many people from the board to be here as possible so we could all get this information in together and not do separate presentations. And we wanted it to be in a place in the public so everyone could come and be a little bit more comfortable than in the chambers. So with that in mind, what I'm going to do, just so everybody understands the process, is I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'll do it in a minute, but we're going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to then end the meeting. We'll have a legally required public comment period, but don't feel like that's when you have to ask your questions because once the meeting is officially over, the workshop will begin. And this allows us that when it's time for Q and A after the presentation, it can be a conversation. If you've ever come to a City Commission meeting, by the rules, you come up, you say your question or you say your comment, you sit down, we go through everybody, and then we answer them. This is going to be a Q and, a full-on Q and A. So if you're up there asking a question, you have a follow-up, you can, you'll get your answer while you're there. So for that reason, the, the calling of the meeting, the public comment, and the closing are just a formality so that we're not here violating quorums. But just to let everybody know, the rest of the evening will just present as a workshop with a question and answer session. So if you really have some public comment you want to get off your chest, you can in the minute here, but otherwise, just know that there's going to be plenty of time after the presentation for questions and answers on the presentation. And we will have our whole evening in the very capable hands of the Flywheel group and really make it an interactive experience for everybody. So with that, I've called the meeting to order, and I think attendance has been taken. I get the nod here, but for all three boards. And with that, I will ask, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will then adjourn the special meeting and we will turn it over to the workshop for Flywheel. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for being here. I'm Ryan Kilpatrick.
Server drama. I'm Leah DuMichele.
Yeah, so I run a small consulting practice called Flywheel Community Development Services. I've got some colleagues here. Arielle and Adam are here with me. We're excited to provide this workshop for you tonight. Leah, do you want to give a little more background about your organization?
Sure. I'm with the Michigan Association of Planning. We are the trade organization for professional planners and elected and appointed officials. So about a quarter of our members are professional planners like myself and like Ryan, but three-quarters of us are planning commissioners and elected officials who are making good land use decisions. But before that, I was in private practice at Beckett and Rader, who, you know, works in the Traverse City area. So I've been deeply interested and worked with Sean there as a matter of fact, so I've been deeply interested in this area for quite some time.
Okay. So I'm going to give you a little background about myself, and then we're just going to dive in on housing data and all kinds of nerdy stuff as it relates to housing and incentives and zoning and all the things. So prior to this, I ran an organization called Housing Next. We were one of the first regional organizations to really focus on housing as an economic development and workforce issue. We were founded to serve Ottawa County, and then we started to serve Kent County, and then we started to serve Muskegon and Alleghen Counties. And Yaro Brown is here from Housing North, who serves a full 10-county region here. And towards the end of our presentation, we're going to have Yaro come up and talk a little bit about some of the work that Housing North is doing in the region, and specifically some of the things that are happening across Grand Traverse County. But the way we think about this is to understand the data that underlies our housing shortage, to understand the policy, not only at the local government, but at the state and the federal level, not only in terms of government, but in terms of how housing gets financed. We have an entire infrastructure that is set up to create the results we're getting today. And for many people, those results are working really well, right? If you've owned a home for 10 or 15 years, you've seen your property values shoot up quite a bit. If you haven't yet broken into the homeownership market, different story, right? And so our job is to understand, what are those dynamics, and how do we begin to solve for them? So I'm going to grab my clicker, and we'll just dive in. So Leah and I are going to tag-team. She's got some slides baked in, I've got some slides baked in. So part of the reason, part of the impetus for this is we gave a version of this presentation last fall at the Housing Summit, the Northwest Michigan Housing Summit. And Leah and I have been working together with the University of Michigan on something called a zoning atlas. And what that is, is it's basically a tapestry of all of the zoning ordinances across an entire region woven together. So Traverse City has its own zoning ordinance with, I don't know, 10 districts, Sean, 15, right? Who knows how many districts? And then Garfield Township has its own zoning ordinance and zoning districts. And then ACME has its own zoning ordinance and zoning districts. And if you're a builder or a developer, I want you to think about, if you manufactured something, if you create a product, typically you can create one product that you can then sell to any customer within the United States, North America, maybe the world. That one product can go anywhere. When it comes to housing, your product has to change every time you cross the street. Or every time you travel a mile down the road, you end up in a different zoning district, suddenly your setbacks have changed. Suddenly, your green space requirement has changed, or your parking requirement has changed. You can't build the exact same thing everywhere. And so the efficiencies that are baked into our industrial system cannot be baked into housing. And so that's one of the big things that we're running into. And the zoning atlas helps us to understand, where are all of those efficiencies across the landscape, and how do we begin to streamline or solve for some of those? So I'm going to give you a preface. Interrupt me, right? If somebody wants to talk about something, if there's slides or data or something that you're like, "Oh, I'm not so sure," let's have that conversation midstream, and then we'll also have more Q and A. But the first thing that I always want to start with is, we're not just talking about building boxes for people to live in, right? We're talking about building community. We're talking about neighborhoods. We want to create a sense of belonging. We want to create a sense of quality of life that is available and accessible to everybody in the community, whether you're earning $15,000 a year or $150,000 a year. We want a sense of belonging and community. And so weaving that into our strategy is important. We're not just going to say, "Build the cheapest thing possible in the worst location possible, and that's going to be good enough." The other important underlying factor here is basic economics. So, so far, you all are pretty quiet. I'm going to try to pull you into this a little bit, and even if it's awkward, come with me. If we have a lot of something, if I sell something and I have a lot of it and not very many people want it, what should I do to the price? I should lower it, right? Maybe people will actually want it if I bring the price down. What if I can only make a few of those things and everybody wants it? What should I do with my price? I'm going to raise it, right? Like, any astute businessperson, that's, that's how they're going to respond. Housing is no different, right? If there are a lot of people who want housing and there isn't enough of it available, all those people are going to compete, and then what happens? You get into bidding wars, right? How many people know somebody who recently bought a house and had to outbid somebody else? "Dang, that's more than I expected." How many people know somebody who got outbid when trying to buy a house? That was almost everybody. Crazy, right? So that's basic supply and demand. Economics 101. We don't have enough of a thing, we have a lot of people competing for that thing, and price goes up. Now, the problem with basic supply and demand when it relates to housing is housing is an inelastic good, which means even if there's not enough of it available, people have to continue to spend more and more and more, right? So I often give the example, I've got two boys who are teenagers, and when the new game console comes out, Playstation or whatever the thing is, they want it, right, for Christmas. But Sony knows not to make enough of those things leading up to Christmas because they can increase the price by a couple hundred dollars, and then they'll drop it like in the after-Christmas sales. But there's a point at which they know families are just not going to buy the thing, right? When it costs $1,000, a lot of families are priced out. They're like, "Okay, no new video game console for you." We don't have that option when it comes to housing, right? We can't just opt out of the housing market for a couple years while we save up enough money. We have to pay the high price, even when it's well above budget. So in Grand Traverse County, we've got roughly 48% of renters are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, and more than 30% are spending close to 50% of their income on housing. So think about that, right? How many of our local renters are spending half of their budget on housing? It really impacts the other things that they're able to do in our local economy. And the economy is part of the reason that housing has become such a hot-button issue, right? When, I would say, 15, 20 years ago, it was primarily a social issue, right? We were like, "Oh, gosh, there are a handful of people that are having a hard time," and we didn't all talk about it at regular dinner table conversation. But then when employers started to say, "I can't attract workers, right? I've got jobs that I'm willing to pay $65,000, $70,000 a year for, and I can't get somebody to move up here in order to take the job." Anybody work with the school system? Local, public, or private? I think I saw a hand. It was a sneaky hand. Retired, okay. So most of our public school systems are having a hard time attracting first-year teachers into their districts, because even though they pay $50,000, $55,000 a year, a first-year teacher finding a place to live on that salary is really difficult. And it's teachers, it's firefighters, it's police officers, it's sheriff's deputies. All of these really integral components of our economy are pricing people out. So this is what it costs. These are median rent and median home price in Traverse City as of a couple of days ago. Now, as it relates to median rent, there is no single source of data, so we use the Zillow Rent Index. You can also use Rent Cafe, you can use CoStar, there are a bunch of data sources. This was the most up-to-date data that we could find, $2,200 a month on average. I found some units that were renting for $1,500 a month. I think I found one that was renting for $1,200 a month. Everything else was roughly $2,000 to $3,500 a month. How many people's, and I want you to give me a sneaky hand, how many people's mortgage is less than $2,200 a month? Ooh, I had some proud hands. Right? So think about that. You own your home, it's probably larger than an 800-square-foot apartment, and you're paying less than the typical renter, less than somebody who's just, just trying to make it in the local community. Median home price is $438,000 as of the end of the first quarter of 2024. And so at 7% interest, right, like, so this is part of the problem, 7% interest rates, the payment on that, assuming 10% down, is $3,300 a month, right? I think that also included taxes. But $3,300 a month, I think, is, it's almost four times what my first mortgage was when I bought my first house, like, 16, 17 years ago. I can't even imagine. I can't pay that now. I couldn't pay it 10 years ago. I definitely couldn't pay it when I bought my first house. That's a super-high price point. So we mentioned, teachers are having a hard time, their maximum housing budget, if you, anybody listen to Dave Ramsey or have a financial planner that's like, "Don't spend more than 30% of your income on housing. Don't be house-rich and cash-poor." Your max budget should be about 30% of your income, and so this teacher, probably 10 years' experience in order to earn $66,000 a year, their budget is only half of what it would cost to buy a house in, in Traverse City and the general Grand Traverse market. EMTs, I hope none of you have been in an ambulance at any point recently, but the day that you need to be in one, you want your EMT to live close by, right? You want them to be, to show up to work and to be ready to work, right? But when you earn $35,000 a year and you can only afford $900 a month in rent, what are the chances that your EMT lives within 45 minutes of the place that they're working, right? Pretty low. Leah, I think this might be your slide.
It can certainly be the start of my slide. So, the math says, right, that those two positions that Ryan just, just described do not live inside of the city of Traverse City at that median price. They might, but the chances are, the math suggests that they do not, and so, do you want a next slide?
Yep.
Okay.
What?
Phew. Oh, that was an important graphic. And so, we, so really, this is the picture of the economic system in Traverse City. And so I, I, this is actually my second career. I've been a planner for 15 years or so. And when I first got here, it was all about placemaking. It was all about economic investment in city centers, and it was understood and given that that economic investment in the centers was going to have effects, that it were far-reaching outside of those municipal limits to the entire region. Economics is so regional. If you are a planner like us and you've been searching for economic data ever to write a master plan, you find it is all at the county level because economics are regional. So it's so strange that housing is so very local, but it's all part of the same system. So here, two graphs, right? This is from the census. They're on the map feature, which I just love. On the left, all of the folks who work in Traverse City and where they live. So there's about 25,000 jobs inside the city of Traverse City, and they are filled by folks throughout the county and even beyond. On the right, the work locations of people who live inside the Traverse City, inside Traverse City. So there's, we'll just, we're using round numbers, we'll just call it 15,000 people. Even if every man, woman, and child had a job within the city limits, we would still have 10,000 people that were commuting in from out in the county. And those people have homes, right? So this is the same system, and I think we all know that, right? We've all heard, "Drive until you qualify." We've all heard, you know, "Get a job and then find a place to live." So I'm just going to dive into a little bit what that looks like. So here, Ryan's going deep, and I'm going wide. So next slide, please. So I just pulled out the jurisdictions inside the township that are growing as much as the city of Traverse City is, either by the number, the population, or by percentage. Because in terms of capacity in your community, if, say, you get 50 new housing units, but you only had 600 to start with, that's a pretty big jump, right? That, that scale matters in terms of what you can absorb. So what we see when we take a look at this is that the pattern where housing, where population is growing, which means housing is growing because people live somewhere, I chose population because that can be constrained, it can fit into different numbers of housing units, but the number of people is the actual need. So you can see that this pattern looks pretty similar to the pattern that we saw in the previous map. So very dense inside the city, to the, never eat soggy waffles, to the west and to the south heavier, and then a little bit to the east. That's where the growth is happening here. Next slide, please. Oh, that's back to you.
So we're going to talk more about these three aspects. Grand Traverse County is expected to grow by 11,000 additional households. In fact, it needs 11,000 additional housing units in order to accommodate the folks who are already commuting into the region or trying to break into the local market. Our typical zoning county-wide, and this includes the whole county, not just the city of Traverse City, mostly prioritizes single-family zoning, and we'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. But as Yaro was just mentioning, and we're going to talk a lot more about transportation later in, in this presentation, it used to be that if you just drove far enough away, you could find something that was kind of affordable, right? If you were willing to drive 25, 30, 35 minutes, you could generally find something within your budget. It doesn't work that way anymore. One, the cost of construction has gotten so high across the entire region, building anything anywhere is expensive. And two, the cost of transportation has changed dramatically. So the average household is now spending roughly $800 a month per vehicle. And so when you've got two people who need to commute in from Kingsley into Traverse City, their budget is going to be $1,200 to $1,600 a month in order to get back and forth, and think about what that could do for their housing budget. So really thinking about that, within the lens of what do we mean by affordable housing? So when I say affordable housing, how many people think immediately, "Oh, it must be subsidized. It must have a low-income housing tax credit," or "Section 8, thank you." Most communities that I go to, when we say affordable housing, the immediate assumption is, "Oh, subsidized housing," right? And then the next follow-on thought that most people don't say out loud is, "Oh, right, those people," right? How many people have been in that conversation when we're talking about, "Oh, yeah, those people that need affordable housing?" Well, affordable housing is about what you earn and whether you can afford the housing in your marketplace. And that's going to be different depending on what you earn, right? So affordable housing to somebody who earns $35,000, $40,000 a year is different than affordable housing to somebody who earns $75,000, $80,000 a year. But guess what? Both salaries can't afford housing in Traverse City today. Whether you're earning $35,000 a year or $75,000 a year, you're likely not able to break into the housing market, unless you've owned a home for the last 10 years and you've built up a bunch of equity. Then you should be capable of staying in the market. So in terms of the housing need, yes?
I have a question.
Yeah.
When you go back to your question, when you talk about what is the normal mean, is $50,000 your gross salary or your take-home pay?
Yes. So the question is...
Because that could also be 30% less depending on your situation.
Yes. Yeah, the question is, when we say salary, are we saying gross pay or net pay? And it's gross, right? So we're making that calculation based on your gross salary. So the government is still going to take 25% for taxes and all the other things. You might get some pulled out for health insurance or your 401K. We're including that in your income, even though it's not available to spend. So to your point, like, 30% is probably already feeling pretty, like, stretched pretty thin. Yeah. So this is the housing need for rental product across Grand Traverse County. You can see what people can afford in terms of rent and how many additional homes we would need at that rental point across the marketplace. The total need is about 3,500 additional rental units. You can see a majority of those rental units are needed for households that can afford $1,100 a month or less. 10 years ago, $1,100 a month was market rate. In fact, it was, it was even a little bit above market rate. There were plenty of units available for $700, $800 a month that were market rate, unsubsidized units, 10 or 12 years ago. Now, $1,100 a month is less than half of what a market rate rent is. And I have these quirky little blue arrows on here because I want to talk about what happens when we have wealthier folks who move into the neighborhood and we don't have enough housing supply. Those wealthier folks are able to outcompete, right? Our basic law of supply and demand says when we don't have enough of a thing and a lot of people want the thing, the price goes up. The people who can afford the higher price are the folks who have the most disposable income. But what then happens is, the folks, the next tier down, so if, if technically I want an apartment or a condo that I'm willing to spend $2,700 a month on, but there isn't enough of that available, I'm going to take the next step down in the marketplace and I'm going to go rent something in the $1,800 to $2,700 a month range. Even though I might be willing to spend more, it's not available. So I'm taking the next step down in the marketplace, but what I then do is I push the folks with less income down further into the market, right? So those folks who otherwise would be able to afford market rate, I'm competing with them, I'm driving the price up as a result, they now have to take that naturally occurring affordable housing that's in the less desirable neighborhood, but at least it's still in their budget. But that housing, what was affordable to our middle and moderate-income households a few years ago, now those middle and moderate-income households are priced out of the market altogether, right? Now they're commuting in from 45 minutes away or an hour away. A question in the back.
Yeah, you seem to be assuming that all these people, you have a single person, and you know, and how do you talk, that not all the people are married? Are your numbers...
Yes.
...cavey quite a bit, and you assume that a few of it get married, right?
Yes, great question.
So you have the numbers that...
Yeah. So the question is, well, what about all the people who have a partner, right? What about all the people who have two incomes in their household? All of that is factored into this data, right? So what I have shown you, I've, I've shown you the salaries for individuals, but what's factored into this data is what a couple can afford, as well as what a single adult can afford, and we'll show you some tables that represent that in a little bit. So those same market dynamics apply to for-sale housing. In Grand Traverse County, we need almost 8,000 additional for-sale homes if we were going to meet the, the need across the community. And this is all the folks who are commuting in. It's all the jobs that are being added. It's all the folks who are currently doubled up. I don't know if anybody knows a family who is currently living with either family or friends or former neighbors, but we have a growing number of households who are, are moving in together because they can more easily afford the rent or the mortgage as a result. But the same thing happens here. You might have higher-income households who are able to pay more, but if there isn't enough housing available at the top end of the market, they just take the next step down. But in the for-sale market, what happens is, when they take the next step down, they might still have additional disposable income where they can say, "Hey, this isn't quite the house that we wanted, but it was the one that we were able to get this year, and we're going to invest another $50,000, $75,000, $100,000 into the house to get the kitchen we want, to make sure the bathrooms are up to date." But what we've then done is elevated the value of that house, so now it's even further out of the price point of our middle-income households. So now quickly, we're going to talk about, how did we get here, right? Like, why do we not have enough of this housing? I don't know what happened to that slide. There it goes. The, the short answer is, there were a bunch of factors that all collided, and 2007 was kind of the breaking point. The upper-left graph shows that blue line kind of fell off a cliff in 2007. That was the number of starter homes that were built. That was the number of starter homes that were built year over year. We just stopped building starter homes because, again, the laws of supply and demand got in the way. 2007, we had a foreclosure crisis. Suddenly, we had a bunch of really cheap homes show up on the market. And when we've got a bunch of really cheap homes on the market, what are the chances that me as a builder, I'm going to build a bunch of starter homes that are priced at double what a 15-year-old house is available for on the market? Now, we've got a lot of housing that's available and not enough people who want the housing. What happened to prices? Yep. And so if I'm a builder, I can't make money building starter homes anymore. It doesn't make any sense because there's too much supply available in the marketplace. So we lost half of our construction labor during the 2007 to 2012 crash. They never came back, right? We're still trying to figure out, how do we get more tradespeople? How do we get more plumbers and electricians and framers into our marketplace? But since we frankly haven't recovered in terms of trades, now the majority of new homes that get built are much higher-end because you need to be able to attract-- if you've got a limited workforce, now you've got to compete for that limited supply of workers. And in order to compete, you've got to pay more. In order to pay more, you've got to charge more for the house that you sell. Now we're primarily focusing on that upper tier of households. So this is the other really important-- yes, ma'am?
I have a question regarding the start of the year. Do you have a age, um, something in terms of maybe 20 years versus 20 years? I have a question. Probably, Yara, you're telling me the first three years.
Yeah, I don't think that one's up here. That's a great question. And the question was, do you know if there are trends in terms of what is the average age of folks when they buy their first starter home? So I'm not going to get this 100% right. But as you can assume, in the early 2000s and even through the mid-'80s, average age was kind of mid to upper 20s. Most young households were buying their first home. By the time they were 32 or 33, the majority of young adults had bought their first home. Now we've got lots of people in their late 30s to early 40s who are buying their first homes, and many who have sort of resigned themselves that they're not going to be able to afford to buy a home anytime in the near future. So I'll see if I can follow up and get actual raw data on that. But the other important factor here, and this, I think, goes to the earlier question about who's living in these households. We've had a pretty significant shift in terms of demographics in households over the last 10 years or so. From the 1950s until the mid-1990s, almost 70% of all households were families with kids. Traditional, nuclear families, mom, dad, couple kids, dog and a cat, and a parakeet, right? Now, almost a third of households are single adults. Roughly 40% are two adults with no kids anymore. How many folks in the room are empty nesters? Adult kids are gone. Yes, right? You guys are representative of a larger and larger share of households. Baby boomer generation was one of the largest generations in the history of the United States, and you have a lot of sway over the housing market. And so we've got lots of empty nesters in the community who aren't going to have kids anytime soon and are frankly very healthy, right? For the next 25 years, you'll probably own and stay in a single-family house or the condo that you live in today. But a majority of our housing product over the last 60, 75 years has been built for families with kids. It's been designed and built assuming that a majority of folks in all of our neighborhoods were going to be families with kids. But now, a majority of people who actually live in those households are single adults and two adults with no kids at home. So we have a mismatch between what's available in the marketplace and what households generally need.
Which we will take a look at. So the county numbers, right? They're big, but always when you're looking at the county, there's the big hope that the problem is in some other community besides yours. That's how I feel about it anyways, right? So what does it look like in individual communities? So I just picked households with children and one-person households as sort of representative of kind of the spectrum of instances in which, like, your household composition really shapes the type of housing that is comfortable for you. So houses with kids, I tell you what, I'm a pretty-- like, I'm an urban planner. I'm a pretty, I like density sort of person. I never wanted a single-family house more than when I had a small child, right? That's like, please, a yard, please. So I will, like, I'm kind of putting that as the strongest argument for a single-family home, right? You've got kids at home. And then on the other side, I have single-person households, right? Which I've been at other times in my life, at which point I had a job and I did not also want a second job called my house and a third job called my yard. I had other priorities at that time. So I think that a single-person household in terms of, you know, composition is the best argument possible for something other than a single-family home. So we just, for our growing communities, pulled out those numbers. What do they look like? In your community, what is the percentage of structures, residential structures, that are something other than single-family detached? And how does that compare to the proportion of your community that probably, you know, might really need it? And that's not to say every single person with kids has to, but just a rough match, right? And how does that compare with the portion of your community that really might not be well-served by that? So we look, and there's really a pretty diverse set of circumstances throughout the county, which is great. That's what we're looking for, right? We are looking for housing for all, for options for everyone. Not everybody wants to live inside the job center, and that's fine. They can't all fit anyways. Not everybody wants to live, you know, with a great deal of nature around them, and that's fine. That circumstance can't hold a whole lot of people anyways. So how do we, what do we see? Do we see a tapestry here? I'm not sure that we do. I think that there's a pretty big mismatch between the percentage of other-than-single-family-detached in some cases, either in relation to the households that need it, that, and again, these are generalizations, but the ones that, you know, sort of have a bunch of humans to fill that up and active ones that require the space versus those who have, you know, X amount of energy to maintain this whole domain. So in, for example, we'll say Garfield Township. Garfield Township is here tonight, doing a great job. Percentage of other-than-single-family-detached, 57%. That's really pretty high. You know, nationally, it's closer to 30%. They are doing a fine job of accommodating those one-person households. We may maybe look over to Union Township, which is a pretty, they have a pretty small population to start with, but at only 4% of structures that are other-than-single-family-detached, it seems pretty likely that there are people in that community that might be served by a different housing type. So I have recently done a project where I called up 25 planners across the state, most of them in growing communities. And I asked them, "What's the housing situation?" No matter how well the single-family, even if that was still working, it was still producing what the market wanted. They were being occupied at rates that were not harming the employers. People aged out of them. The folks that were in the home right there, right now at that time, needed a place to go 20 years after that. So even at that very baseline, it's just not possible, I think, to have a community that is mostly single-family homes that is meeting the needs of the folks who are inside the community. So there's some of the ways that it's shaken up. Now, Ryan mentioned those people. And if you have ever conducted a housing meeting, you have probably heard about those people. It maybe broke your heart. Maybe you had to go home and cry about it afterwards. But we hear about it every single time. And it seems to be a shorthand when I hear it. What I think I am hearing people say is renters have a certain set-- they share a certain set of characteristics that are related to their low economic status and that is uncomfortable to live near. That seems to be what I am hearing when the actual words used are, "Poor people are bad neighbors, and they're renters, and I don't want them." So I don't think, for a variety of reasons-- first of all, that's not an appropriate way to treat anybody. Second of all, it's not true, especially here in this region. So renters are not all at the bottom of the income scale, which is the assumption that we are hearing at times. Here, in fact, there's quite an anomaly. The change just from 2010 to 2022, both in the city of Traverse City and in Grand Traverse County, the proportion of the renters who are in the top two tiers of income has doubled in the last 12 years. Actually, if we're building a new rental community, chances are great that, or chances are at least pretty darn good that the people who are moving into them are going to be making more money than the people who own the single-family homes that they are going next to. Which I'm certainly not supporting the idea that we can only house people who are in our top-two income brackets. But I am supporting the idea that renter does not equal those people. Many of us rent. Many of us like it for a variety of reasons. And that understanding, I think, needs to be more widespread because some things are not being said in our conversations that just aren't true.
Okay. So now we're going to talk about basic economics of building, right? So we know we need more housing. We know how much additional housing we need. We kind of know the types of housing we need, right? We do need more single-family. No question, we need more single-family homes. And we need a proportionate share of a bunch of other housing types as well. So how do we build it? Well, we spent a decent amount of time talking to local trades folks, general contractors, builders. And what we found is construction costs range in northwest Michigan from $400 a square foot to $550 a square foot, depending on level of finish. So a pretty simple home, not fancy finishes, not kind of luxury-end building product, a pretty simple home up here is about $415 a square foot. So that's the rule of thumb that we're using right now. Oh, quick, like, mental exercise for you to do. If you know the size of the current home that you live in today, if you know generally the square footage, get out your phone and multiply your square footage by 415. And that'll tell you what it would cost us to build your house today. So we also have to factor in land. It's hard to find land either because-- not because there's a scarcity of land, but because there's not a lot of availability of land that has access to utilities or where the soil will perk or where you can buy less than a quarter of an acre. There's a lot of limitations there. So if we're talking construction costs anywhere from $400 to $550 a square foot, our numbers are going to assume the low end. We're going to assume $400 a square foot. That means an 800-square-foot apartment costs $320,000 to build. Can you imagine, like, even 10 years ago, the idea that an apartment was going to cost $320,000? But if it costs that, if I'm a builder or a developer, it doesn't make any sense for me to build something at that price point unless I can rent it for $2,500 a month. I don't know any builders or developers who are building product and then giving it away for less than it cost them to build, right? It wouldn't make sense. Even nonprofits have to at least break even eventually. Same for a single-family house. If I'm building a 1,200-square-foot home at $400 a square foot, my low-end price point is $480,000 in this market. Mortgage plus taxes is $3,800 a month for that $480,000 home. So, but now, we want to go back and think about, okay, who are all the people that we need in our local workforce? Those teachers, the firefighters, the police officers, the EMT. If we want them to afford housing at $1,000 a month or-- was there a question?
Yara has a question.
Oh, Yara!
I was just wondering if you could compare Leah's and the fourth estate--
Yeah.
--per square foot to the fourth estate in Grand Rapids. I think it's my fault.
Yeah. So I do most of my work in Grand Rapids. Leah does most of her work in Ann Arbor, southeast Michigan. We're seeing average construction costs around $265, $275 a square foot. I don't know, do you know your--
I don't know that, sorry.
Okay. So think about $150 a square foot discrepancy between what it costs to build downstate and up here. And a lot of what I'm hearing is you can't get framers here. You've got to pull framers up from Grand Rapids in a lot of instances. So think about, in order to attract that framing crew off of a job in Grand Rapids, you've got to pay them enough to justify their trip two hours north, right? That's some of what we're facing right now in terms of construction costs. So, but how do we actually make housing that costs that much affordable? I mean, without, if we're going to assume we're just going to continue to build as usual, no changes in how we build, we need to subsidize, right? And so an apartment that is affordable at $1,000 a month needs a $180,000 subsidy per unit. A home that's going to be affordable to somebody who can afford $1,500 a month needs a $280,000 subsidy per home. And then when we extrapolate that out, if we assume, all right, we're going to try to help 2,500 renters. 2,500 renters are going to need roughly that $180,000 subsidy per person. That's a $450 million subsidy just to support 2,500 renters in Grand Traverse County. Now, for context, the state of Michigan gets a total of $30 million a year from the federal government in housing subsidies. So if all of Michigan is getting $30 million a year, and our gap for just 2,500 renters is $450 million, what are the chances that we're going to close that subsidy gap between now and forever? Right? So I am all in favor of subsidizing housing where necessary, but I'm also in favor of making housing so that we don't have to subsidize all of it, right? How do we really focus our subsidies on the lowest-income households so that our middle and moderate-income households can afford housing all their own? So in this marketplace, anywhere in the state of Michigan, if you're trying to achieve rents at $600 a month or less, it needs a subsidy, hands-down, period, right? So if I'm a property manager, it costs me $500 a month roughly just to maintain the property, regardless of what I spent to buy it or build it. It's a $500 a month expense just to keep the lights on, to keep the property properly groomed, to plow the snow, to make sure that everything's in good working order, to pay the taxes, right? All of those things get added into that $500 a month management fee. So the unit has to be free, essentially, in order to get $600 a month rent. But at $1,250 a month, that was still, that was market rate five years ago, right? $1,250 a month was generally a market-rate rent five years ago. I wish that every project I was involved with, we had said, "Okay, just freeze your rent right here. We'll do whatever we have to do. Just hold your rent. We'll give you the tax incentive if you hold your rent right here." But what's now happened in the last five years since COVID is those rent levels have doubled because construction costs almost doubled. But we can still, in some instances, achieve rents close to that with a much smaller subsidy if we are flexible about what we're allowing to be built. And we'll talk about, we'll talk more about that flexibility. If we're trying to get rents in the $1,800 to $2,200 a month range, we can still get pretty close to that with just flexible regulatory environment and no subsidy, as long as we're really being creative about flexibility. I cannot hit a $220,000 mortgage on a single-family house without a subsidy. So that's where that moderate subsidy needs to come in. And then for $100,000 a year households, $2,500 a month rent or $350,000 mortgage, that's still possible. We can get there with regulatory flexibility alone. So what I'm doing here is teeing up the latter part of the conversation that we're going to have tonight about all of the other tools that we need to bring to the table. But I want to acknowledge the fact that probably can't ever afford to subsidize every household that needs it, which means we can't afford to continue with a status quo model of operating, but we can begin to think about all of the other ways that we can influence cost and price, and collaboratively, as a community, decide how do we want to prioritize how the community uses those tools, which ones are appropriate in which neighborhoods, and how to deploy them over the time. So generally, the three tools are going to be that flexible regulatory environment, how do we make it easier to build more stuff, right? Basic rules of supply and demand. How do we calibrate our development incentives to ensure that some of the housing is receiving a moderate tax break, right? And so our development incentives are things like tax increment financing, tax abatements, some of the same things that we've used for business for a very long time are now available for residential, if and when it makes sense, where it's appropriate. By the way, we would never advocate that you just say, yep, everything gets a tax incentive, because that distorts the marketplace, right? When everything gets a tax incentive, people just start to bake it into their pro forma and their cost structure, and costs just rise with the amount of incentives available. And so you want to calibrate those incentives only to get the public benefit that you're after. And then, third, is impact capital. And that's a mix of philanthropy, corporate investment, public financing, all of the ways that we can invest dollars into the deal, that don't necessarily have to be grants, but that offer a below-market-rate interest rate, or a below-market rate of return. So currently, part of the way deals get structured is, you have a group of investors that says, we're going to provide the equity, and then you have a bank that says, we're going to provide the debt, and everybody says, this is risky, and I want to make sure I get my money back, and if I don't, I want to have a contingency plan. And so every one of those deals has a baked-in anticipated rate of return to mitigate for risk. And so if our investors want 12%, 15%, 20% rate of return, and the bank needs 7% rate of return, those interest or return on investment costs add a lot of cost to the overall deal. So, these are all the ways that we add costs to housing. Housing generally requires land, I haven't yet, well, unless you want to do houseboats, but that's a different conversation. Mostly, we need to buy land, mostly, we have to build something, and so you've got your construction costs. In order to get a permit, you have to have it properly designed by licensed professionals, and they cost money. And the more times you force them through, like, the planning commission process, or a special land use, or a variance, the more you're going to pay in design fees. Same thing for permitting and professional fees, and then your financing, your interest costs are pretty big, and your carry costs. So if I have to buy land and hold it for three years while I try to get through an entitlements process, I'm paying money in order just to sit on that land. And I don't know a developer that's willing to say, oh, well, right? Eventually, those costs get passed on to the renter or the home buyers. A general rule of thumb, this isn't always true, but a general rule of thumb is that the land should be no more than 1/5th of the total value of the home when it's completed. Same for apartment units. Generally, when we are talking about apartments, we've got developers who are willing to pay somewhere around $15,000, $20,000 a unit for land, if it's a market-rate product, but that's assuming they're going to rent that product for $2,000 a month. The less expensive the land is per unit, the less expensive the rent can be. So think about, the number of units that are allowed on a particular piece of property makes it more likely that that property can provide slightly lower rents. Now, land, as I mentioned, should generally only be 10% to 25% of the overall cost. But when we look at that in a schematic form, the top diagram is a typical single-family residential subdivision. You've got 38 single-family lots, quarter-acre to half-acre lots, generally. And you can see what you get, you can see your average price, your likely minimum lowest price, the new taxable value that gets generated, the number of school students. How do schools get funded, by the way? Where's the majority of their school funding come from? Taxes, per pupil funding, right? The more students they have enrolled, the more funding they have to operate the buildings. So we want more students. And then you've got your infrastructure on a per-dwelling-unit basis. Now, the exact same piece of land could be divided differently, so I have the same land cost either way, the same piece of land could be divided differently, and still be 100% homeowner product, by the way, this doesn't have to include any rentals. We could get 146 new homes, that is a combination of single-family detached on quarter-acre or third-of-an-acre lots, plus townhomes, plus condos. We could get our average price point down significantly, we could get our lowest price point down significantly. Our new taxable value jumps threefold. So the amount of local revenue that comes to both the local municipality and the county just jumped threefold on the same piece of property, we got double the number of new students, and we've quartered the total amount of infrastructure on a per-dwelling-unit basis, meaning that your tax obligation to pay for that infrastructure has gone down. This is a win-win, for the most part. I think the question is, where might we want to allow, through local zoning, to have those types of neighborhoods exist in our communities? And so, what I want to ensure that we're really reiterating here is, zoning itself does not make housing affordable. What zoning does is reduce the regulatory barriers, so that everything costs a little bit less. Yes, sir? Yes? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I love that you brought that up, because we're going to talk, so he said, we're not, we're not acknowledging the fact here that the lower version needs sewer and water, the upper version can be done on well and septic. I 100% agree, and we've got data to talk about that, because you're right, we've got to be really strategic about where we allow what, because sewer and water is a really critical component. Lea?
The zoning atlas, all right. So, I'm unreasonably excited about this, I think that maybe planners generally are, perhaps people who use zoning ordinances. So, Ryan started describing this to you a little bit. So, a zoning atlas, really just aggregated zoning ordinances. So we collected ordinance text, we collected the spatial data, GIS-based, and then we conducted an analysis. So this is, next slide, please. We are one of 30 states that are trying to create a national zoning atlas. So this is one of those things that, until someone says it, you don't realize that, oh, that should have been there all along. But so, right, just to take our state as an example, we, the State Zoning Enabling Act, delegates all 1,500, 1,800 municipalities, says you can go ahead and make some laws about how we're going to use our land, and then we never hear about it again at the state level. So, there's no understanding of how this power is used in the aggregate, there's no understanding of how the laws we make in one community affect another, it's just like, eh, go ahead! And so it turns out that that's not just Michigan, the person who started this project would have found out if there was a state that already had all of this information on board, nobody does. So, we are getting together and we are creating it. As I mentioned, as a planner, I'm really excited about it, this has taken support from all kinds of organizations. It has been realtors, it has been schools, it has been policy institutes, it has been think tanks, it has been all kinds of folks who have wanted to use this information and have found it difficult. Next slide, please. Okay, so, I hope that the rest of this picture comes. Yes, okay, great. So, it is not just the boundaries and the names on a map, what this project actually does, it's housing-specific, and each of those zoning districts contains an analysis of what kind of housing can be built there. So I was a part of this team, I did some of these analyses, and I can vouch for you, that we answered 107 questions about housing and how it can be built for every single zoning district. How many units can be built? Does it need a public hearing? Does it have to be attached to sewer and water? Does it have, what are the setbacks exactly? Do, can you have an accessory dwelling unit? Is this part of a planned residential development? 107 questions for every zoning district, and what you get is this, so this is a glance at the final product, this is in the Grand Rapids area, because our pilot was in Kent, Ottawa, and Muskegon counties. And so this is the final product. You see, over there on your menu, if you are a housing developer, you know what kind of product, as Ryan was saying, you know what kind of product you have the capability of building. This answers your questions about whether or not it can be built in any given location. Does it have a parking requirement? Do you have to go through a public hearing? Is there a height cap? Is it restricted to only elderly housing? Do you have to be connected to sewer and water? Do you have to be connected to transit? Is there a minimum lot size? Can you have an accessory dwelling unit? All of those things, those questions are answered. And they're answered, not just for one community, but also for the community next door. What our hope is, what everybody's hope is, is that this allows some folks to get off the sidelines and become housing developers who might not have been anyways. Right now, there is just great advantage to this economy of scale, and in part, it starts right here. If you are a small outfit, it is going to take you all day to get this information for one community. And that's if you already know how, like, if you already know who to call, and you have an idea of how to work a zoning ordinance, and half a dozen places that you should check, and, I mean, it's going to take you some time. And should you get to the end of your day and find out that the answer is no, actually your product isn't going to work in this community, you can start all over again tomorrow in the community next door. That is no way to get people off the sidelines, right? So, the idea is that, if you are a person who just wants to put together a couple of projects in your neighborhood, like, that's a manageable scale to you. What I have heard in these, this series of interviews that I conducted with planning directors, was that anything, the smaller units, the four units, the eight units, those, those little ones that are getting built, those are getting built by local developers, those are getting built by folks who are inside the community, who are like, oh, I see a need here, and I can fix it. The idea, and I can help anyways, the idea here is that this is, it is really an idea whose time has come, I think it, next slide, please. Oh, never mind, that's not the next slide, I'll come back to that line in a minute. This is the slide that actually got us here. So we've just completed that Grand Rapids pilot project, that data is fresh off the presses, and we are looking around, okay, what's the next right area for it? We think that the Grand Traverse region is certainly a good one for it, it, you have longstanding housing work, you have the capacity for it, you certainly have the need. Maybe the next slide? Okay, great. These are the things that we hope that this zoning atlas will do. For developers, for small-scale developers, it will show where unused capacity is, it will identify project parameters across jurisdictions, so that you don't have to start over again tomorrow, and it will make zoning accessible to smaller-scale developers. This is something that our colleague at the University of Michigan says all the time, zoning is opaque, and there are interests that that serves. There's a reason that it's so difficult to access, and that it has, that nobody has sort of taken the charge to change it. So, but it supports not only developers, but also people who are ostensibly overseeing what kind of development gets done, which is us, right? Supporting estate and local investments, we are going to need some subsidy. How are we going to deploy that subsidy in a way that makes sense, that actually achieves the aims that we are trying to achieve? Well, we probably need some more information, we're hoping that this can help provide it. At a minimum, it allows us to see, just at a glance, where zoning supports those missing metal types, something other than single-family zoning. And it also, as we are trying to put together our incentives and our programs, allows us access to a rich set of data that is perfectly relevant to making those decisions and to targeting those policies.
Yaro, do you want to say anything about Housing North and the proposed zoning atlas in northwest Michigan? So, we're putting Yaro on the spot real quick, we did kind of talk about this earlier today, we're just doing it earlier, because I know you get other stuff.
Yeah, so we are the regional lead for the county, or the region, so Region D, and it is a goal in our regional housing plan to do a zoning atlas in northwest Michigan. We hope we will be the next community to do this, but it is dependent on funding. So, we are working with MAP and U of M to find that funding source, we did put in a few grant applications already, but if Traverse City or Grand Traverse County want to be a pilot, that would be great too, but we do feel like, you know, we want to start with the whole region, but could also consider, you know, some municipalities to take the lead. So it's a goal of the region, it is funding-dependent, and I think this is a good opportunity to engage the local units of government, to see, is this something you really want? How can we help with it, and what would that look like? And so we're looking at training our team and partnering with MAP and U of M, to make sure we have the local capacity to not only do that, but then maintain it and upkeep it in our region.
Thanks, Yaro. Yes, sir? You know the budget better than I do.
So, the question was about the cost of the zoning atlas, yes? Well, so, we've just completed the pilot project, and a part of the pilot project was to sort of feel our way around that and figure it out. So, the cost of the pilot project was, I have $100,000 total, I believe.
I think that was about it, yeah.
Yes, but, part of that was sort of like figuring out how to do it, I have sense, and it, you know, it matters how many jurisdictions that you have, I mean, there is some variation. We think that maybe we could get it done for about, give or take, $25,000 per county. Well, we have 83 counties in Michigan, so, times 25. Only 80, now, three down, 80 to go. And I'm just going to repeat that for the benefit of the microphone, which was, the proposal was to do all 10 counties in the region over the course of two years, including the training, which is actually, sidebar here, which is a really great part of this. So, we did the pilot project, and so now, we, a series of students at the University of Michigan, and I myself, have some real detailed knowledge about the zoning ordinances in the Grand Rapids metropolitan area. That's not the ideal place for that knowledge to land, really, like, the idea of having it done at the regional agency, so that the folks who do it then get this detailed information is much better. Yes? Yeah, so the question was whether developers are part of the team, and whether or not they are using the data. So, the first part of that question is no, the team was Housing Next using the data, and, and us, at MAP, and then the University of Michigan really cranking, crunching the numbers, so that was the pilot team. I will say that I expect there to be some interest from developers, but this, this is, was it last week that we completed? I mean, like, maybe two weeks ago did we complete this and roll it out, so nobody's used it yet. World premiere of the Michigan zoning atlas, you saw it.
Will, and so, this is the exciting part, I'm going to come back to you in a minute, we're going to fly through some slides, because I want to get into some dialogue in a minute. The really exciting part about this, from my perspective, is the zoning atlas has helped us to think differently about land use in west Michigan. And so, this is an illustration of where we have vacant land in Kent County. So Kent County is the county that surrounds the city of Grand Rapids. You can see Grand Rapids is right in the middle there, where there's almost no large swathes of vacant land, we've got lots of vacant land around the perimeter, and you can see our counts, 115,000 total acres of vacant land out there. And because of the zoning atlas, we understand that on that 115,000 vacant acres, based on zoning across all of those jurisdictions, we could build about 73,000 housing units on all of that acreage. But what we would get then is about 1.4 acres per dwelling unit. And what we would get is a destruction of all of the agricultural land and all of the open space that surrounds the Grand Rapids metro region. We would build on all of that land in order to get our 73,000 housing units. For context, in the Kent County marketplace, we need 35,000 additional housing units in the next five years. The same consultant that did the Housing North Housing Needs Assessment did one for us in Kent, and Ottawa, and Muskegon counties, 35,000 housing units needed just in the next five years. We would consume half of this land in order to get it. So then we took the next step deeper and said, okay, if, if we know how much of that land is zoned residential, how much of that vacant land is zoned exclusively for single-family homes? We have the same household demographics that you guys do, 2/3 of households are single adults, or two adults with no kids at home, but 97.8% of all of the vacant residentially-zoned land is zoned exclusively for single-family homes, on average, 1.4 acres per dwelling unit. So, you can see, our cost to build a house is about $100,000 less than your cost to build a house, but we would still have to spend about $2,800 a month in order to afford a new single-family home in this context. So we then looked to see, okay, well, how many jurisdictions are allowing for two-family homes? 1.5% of all of the vacant residential zoned property in Kent County, can you have something other than a single-family home? And only 0.6% is zoned for multifamily. So, think about this, again, going back to the basic rules of supply and demand, if you don't have a lot of a thing, and a lot of people want that thing, what happens to price? It goes up. And so we've got all these developers who know, they know, all of these folks need a place to rent, and they're competing for the 0.6% of properties that are vacant and zoned for multifamily. There's not nearly enough that is planned or zoned for it. And so, we'll come back, there we go. So, this is a slide I'm super excited about, Adam created just recently. This is what a balanced housing market would look like for us in Kent County, right? The yellow is the share of single-family homes we need in addition, the green is kind of townhomes and two- or three-family, the blue is multifamily, and no matter what we build, 42% of households are going to be priced out, right? So we have to acknowledge that, of all of the households in Kent County, we still aren't going to be able to solve for 42% if we're building brand-new, because brand-new is expensive. But we could solve for 60, or, what is it? 58% of those households if we were to right-size our product. But this is what we actually are allowing for, right? So the difference between the balanced housing market that we need, and what we're actually allowing for is a little bit astounding. So we said, well, what if we, and, and this is Housing Next, Housing Next is a nonprofit that I am a consultant for, we said, what if we just, like, gave the community a vision of what this could look like? And we've been doing this work for the last seven years, we know that proposing multifamily, or even townhomes, in the backyards of folks who own single-family homes can be controversial, right? How many of you are planning commissioners in the room? Where's my planning commissioners? Okay. How many get excited for a public hearing where you're talking about a special land use for multifamily housing immediately adjacent to a single-family neighborhood? Is that, like, your favorite day of the week? Right? Yeah, sure, yes, love the passion, Leslie Knope. We said, well, what if we looked at vacant and underutilized property generally? What if we ignored local zoning and said, where do we have vacant and underutilized property, property generally, and where is it served by sewer and water, to your earlier point, right? We said, what if we didn't sprawl into all of our farmland, and into all of the open space? What if we just use the infrastructure that we already have in the ground? And then we mapped that, and what we found is, we have almost 4,000 acres of vacant land that is currently served by sewer and water on just 36 corridors in Kent County. We didn't even look at every corridor, we just said, we're going to pick 36 that we know we have sewer and water on, and start with those. We could build the same 70,000 units on those corridors, if we assume an average density of around 15 units per acre. And so what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about, what does that average density look like? But first, But first, let me, these slides load slowly. I want to acknowledge, even in more depth, what does it cost to put new infrastructure in the ground? What does existing infrastructure cost? We spent some time, Ariel actually did a lot of work for us, to understand, what does infrastructure cost? On average, right now, it's $1,300 per linear foot to put new sewer, water, and road, either at the county level or even in a subdivision, when you build that 66-foot road width standard. So, for us, our average lot width requirement in Kent County is 78 feet. For a 78-foot frontage, you need to spend $100,000 just to install sewer, water, and road, right? So, that is now the baseline cost, even before you buy your land, you've got to know that you're going to spend that much money. And in terms of the return on investment, your tax return on investment, it would take 35 years for a single-family house to produce enough tax revenue to actually pay for the cost of the infrastructure. Whereas if we put three townhomes, still single-family owner-occupied, on the same 78 feet of frontage, we could get a return on investment in just 16 years, in half the time, right? And so, what we wanted to do is say, okay, where do we have these corridors? What do they look like? We said, we're going to try to avoid single-family neighborhoods, because we've been there, done that, we've gotten some zoning amendments done. I know you guys in Traverse City have allowed accessory dwelling units, you're allowing two-family and townhomes in certain locations, and all that's great. But we said, what if we went to these corridors that are kind of unloved places? Places where we've got more parking lot than we do building? And started to propose opportunities to infill on those parking lots and create real places. And we recognize that in some of those places, people are going to say, whoa, 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 we don't want density out here. Density is going to drive down my property value. Well, we've had a lot of conversation about what does density actually do to property value, and I'm going to let Leah talk a little bit about what she's found in the research.
Well, we just, you know, I mean, we have MAP, we're taking this seriously, right? This is our portion of the housing crisis, and what can we do? And so, what planners do, we plan, we zone, we do development review. And so, we talked about planning, we talked about zoning during the zoning atlas, but then there was still the piece where even housing that was appropriately planned for and appropriately zoned was getting voted down at the development review meeting. And this is not one time, I've never talked to a planner that's like, that's never happened. I mean, every single one is like, oh, yeah, that, right? So, it's like, okay, you're going to take this head-on, like, what is going on here? And that is the big thing I hear, I think that's the top, you know, that's the top headline often that we hear in those meetings is, but what about my property value? So, I was like, okay, well, I'm going to look into it, and I'm going to find out, find out what there is to find out as best I can. And what I assumed was that there was a grain of truth to it, but it was real small and being blown out of proportion, and we were going to get down to the grain and start the conversation there. What I actually, what I actually found was there wasn't even a grain. By and large, there are almost no circumstances in which more housing decreases the value of the existing housing. It is almost always, always, a signal that the economics are such that more housing can be supported, and so, the housing that is already there is more valuable. This isn't part, this is just part of an economic system. And so, this concern is refuted by widespread, longstanding evidence. When I looked, I just couldn't find a crumb of evidence really to support this, which was very shocking, given the prevalence with which we hear it, right? And the enthusiasm with which it is presented at the time. And so, I just really think that it's important to just stand here and say it. That's not true. There are reasons that we think it, but it's not true.
Thanks, Leah. So, the other really important thing that we need to acknowledge is, there is a lot of data about consumer preference. And oftentimes, we'll hear, well, if the market really wanted that kind of housing, somebody would figure out how to build it, and it would be here, right? These are also the rules of supply and demand. If somebody wants it, an entrepreneur is going to figure out and will get it. Well, National Association Realtors does an annual survey, and they found that roughly half of all potential home buyers would prefer a walkable and amenity-rich neighborhood, and would accept a smaller home and a smaller or non-existent yard if it meant that they got to be in that higher-density, more walkable, amenity-rich kind of a place. So, in our marketplace across the state of Michigan, less than 3% of communities have walkable and amenity-rich neighborhoods. Traverse City is very unique relative to communities across the state of Michigan, and this is part of the reason you're pulling so many people into the region, is because it's gorgeous, and it's walkable, and you've got all of these amenities at the local level, and people are like, oh, my gosh, Traverse City's amazing. And even the suburbs around it are amazing, we all want to be there, because we're not building other places like that. When we build new places, they're mostly drivable suburbs, because we're not allowing for these new places to actually get built. And so, the takeaway here is, half of the market wants walkable, half of the market wants suburban. You saw earlier, 97, 98% of what we're planning and zoning for is the walkable suburban, or the drivable suburban. And so, what we're articulating here is, we need a yes-and approach, right? Yes, in our townships, we're going to need that more spread-out built pattern if we don't have sewer and water available, but where you do have sewer and water available, don't waste it, right? Don't allow those units to just sprawl out across that infrastructure, you spent good money putting it in the ground. People want walkable neighborhoods, they're willing to pay for those walkable neighborhoods. Even if we're not getting into subsidy, we've got to be thinking about building more of that type of neighborhood. And it doesn't always have to look like an urban neighborhood, right? This is almost 15 cottages per acre. In some instances, not at this density, but in some instances, this central green can be a shared septic system. It doesn't have to be on sewer and water. It really depends on the quality and condition of the soil and whether it perks properly. But in an urban environment, right, when you've got sewer and water, this is a highly sought-after product type for those single adult and two-adult households who can afford to be homeowners but are basically saying, I don't want 3,200 square feet, and I don't want a half an acre, I frankly don't ever want to have a lawnmower, I just want a small garden and a front porch. Where in your community are you allowing for the small garden and the front porch and a 750 to a 900-square-foot home, right? That's one of the products that is extraordinarily in demand. Townhouses, right, the attached housing product. We've got a lot of folks now that are working remote, they've still hold jobs in other large metro markets, but they're living here, and they're going to that large metro market maybe once a month for a couple of days at a time. Being able to walk out the door, turn the key, and know that the unit is safe, I don't have to worry, did I mow the lawn this week? I don't have to worry about anything, it's, I can walk away and come back. Same thing for retirees, right? We've got a lot of single adult and two-adult retirees in the community who want to be able to travel for a couple of weeks out of the year and not have to figure out, did the 15-year-old down the street remember that we needed our mail to get brought in, and that we needed the lawn to get mowed, and all those kinds of things? Not everybody wants that, but for the folks that do, we want to provide for that product type. And so, we want to think about, how do we infill in some of these places? So, really quickly, I'm going to show you, we've got an awesome team at Flywheel. We started to look at some of the corridors that we have in the Grand Rapids market, where, like I said, we've got these big empty parking lots that are on sewer and water. There's like a million dollars' worth of infrastructure on this corner that is being wasted on a Quaker State oil change and a car wash. That strip mall there is vacant, there's nothing in there, all of that infrastructure. So, what if we built a neighborhood on this? There's a giant park right behind it, begging for neighbors to come use the park. If we built this neighborhood, and this is kind of a cartoon, right? We said, hey, like, this is just a sketch, we want to give you a sense of what's possible. This happens to be a corridor where we have bus rapid transit that goes back and forth from Grand Valley State University to downtown Grand Rapids. It's about halfway between the two. Look what happens on this piece of property. We go from 20 homes to 840 homes, and this is like 22 acres. We go from 1.9 million in taxable value to 157 million in taxable value. The same infrastructure, we didn't build any new infrastructure for that new neighborhood. $8,000 a year to the county jumps to $648,000 a year to the county. $106,000 a year in infrastructure costs, meaning, what do we need to spend on plowing, on street sweeping, on crack-filling, on resurfacing, all of those things? The time that it takes to pay for all that infrastructure in the left-hand scenario is 13 years, in the right-hand scenario, it's six months. Another one, this is a small village northeast, northwest corner of Kent County, Village of Sparta. We did a little infill, we actually scaled this down recently, where we don't have as tall of buildings. But here, we went from 10 homes to 282. You can see our taxable value jumped, both at the county and the local level, look, the local village went from $18,000 a year to $738,000 a year. Imagine what you could fund in terms of special events, in terms of local operations, the number of additional police officers and squad cars that you could afford if your local tax jumped that much. So, the challenge here is, how do we identify where those corridors exist? We have the zoning atlas, our local municipalities know where the infrastructure is, we can then look at the aerial maps, we can look at the assessor's data and understand not only what's vacant, but what's underdeveloped. Where do we have the Quaker State oil change and the car wash on roughly 500 feet of linear infrastructure? And how do we start to fill in the blanks? So, here, instead of developing 115,000 or 118,000 acres, we can develop a third of the 4,000 vacant acres on those corridors and get the same amount of housing for a fraction of the infrastructure costs. I don't know what happened there. But here's what's really important. Ariel, again, has been doing a lot of work around traffic, because the other thing that we hear all the time when we get proposals for new neighborhoods is like, oh, my gosh, what about the traffic? Where are all those cars going to go? And it's already hard to turn left at this intersection. What we found, first of all, is that most of these corridors that we've identified already have tens of thousands of vehicles traveling on them every single day, and so if we add another 500, nobody's going to notice, right? 500 vehicles relative to 60,000 a day, a drop in the bucket, right? We're really not going to see it. Say, like, think about Garfield, think about Division and 31, right? You've got some of those corridors here as well. But we also, when we start to build more compact neighborhoods, we start to create opportunity for people to choose to get around in a way other than driving a car for every single trip. Because when you've got more people in a neighborhood, that neighborhood suddenly can support a coffee shop, and it can support a café or a restaurant. Sometimes it can even support a little neighborhood grocery, depending on how many folks you've got. And who's ever sent their teenage kid to go get milk or bread? Couple people. Who did that when they were a kid? Couple more people, right? Different time. But we can go back to that, I've got some nostalgia for that, and there are opportunities to build that kind of thing in, but the Tart Trail is a really incredible recreational amenity. The question is, how do we leverage the Tart Trail to become commuting opportunity, right? And I'm not going to imagine that we're going to get tens of thousands of people commuting by bike, but everybody who does is one fewer car on the road, it's one less person you have to complain about on your commute, right? Think about it that way. So, the other thing is this whole cost of transportation as part of housing, that Leah is really great in it.
Right, so if the jobs are where they are, then part of the equation of where you live in relation to where the job is includes the transportation. Drive until you qualify is clever, and that was, I think, invented by Realtors, because what it does is it shifts that cost out of the housing market and onto your personal transportation budget. It doesn't make the cost go away, it just puts it in another account, basically. So, the Center for Neighborhood Technology, I'm just, I'm not going to go over this in any great detail, but you can use this website yourself, I just love it. The idea here is that it calculates what is the balance between your housing cost and your transportation cost in that total, so housing should be under 30%, but the total should be under 45%. And so, we see only a couple of places in Grand Traverse County get underneath 45%, and in some places, that's really, the transportation cost is the greater share of the budget than the housing cost is. So, that's important, because if it is out of your bottom line, like, it doesn't matter whether you write the check, whether you were swiping your gas card, or whether you're writing the check to your landlord, it is just all the same money that you don't have. Next slide, please. And so, I, this is, you know, this is a conversation about housing, but I'm just going to put in a little public service announcement for Transit, which can, which, when deployed, hopefully can change the entire equation. A lot of what we're talking about is like, oh, how do we subsidize this? How can we kind of like, you know, change our approach to housing? We can also kind of put our thumb on a whole different portion of the scale and change the experience of people. I have a few things that Transit actually does in relation to how we develop housing on this slide. So, it incentivizes development to be smaller and denser, it makes those smaller and denser units, like, it gives them a reason for existing, and it also controls where those smaller and denser developments go, because they have to be accessible to Transit. This can be appealing to a community that thinks of itself as, you know, sort of mostly rural, pastoral, large lot, single-family, but that would like to have other housing options for their kids, for themselves at another time, for the people who work in their community, and who also would like to have more commercial options, because Transit and commerce have similar requirements for density. Remember, retail follows rooftops, right? And so, if, so when I was, you know, working a lot in this region, one thing we would often hear is that I wish there was just a little more vibe, like, I don't mind that we just have a little shopping area, but I wish there were just a few more things in it, right? This is the kind of organization that allows that to be supported. And so, I just want to make a little plug for this, I know we're not talking about Transit tonight, but to Ryan's point about that $30 million, that's just for housing, this is a whole nother pot of money that, again, gets us to some of the same places we want to go.
Yep. All right. Who's bored?
No.
Yeah. I mean, this is the point at which I sometimes catch people with their eyes closed. So, we're going to get through this portion relatively quickly, but one of the things that my team has done is put together a resource toolkit of all of the programs and initiatives that are available to support housing. And so, this is an example of many of those. I think City of Traverse City and some of the townships in the county are really leaning in on a few of these programs. And the idea is, how do we get really good at understanding how to layer these things? Because using one, just like zoning, using one typically doesn't quite do it in terms of solving for affordability. And so, what we've got to do is figure out, how do we layer them so that we can solve first for the underlying tax condition, then solve for the cost of land, and then solve for the cost of construction? And so, we've got a series of programs that you can overlay on top of one another in order to offset costs. But as I mentioned earlier, what we don't recommend is saying, okay, everybody gets a tax abatement, right? Everybody gets their increment reimbursed to them, no matter what you're doing. The idea is to say, what do we define as a public benefit in our community or in this particular neighborhood? What are the standards that we expect a developer to solve for? And when they do, what are we willing to offer in exchange for that public benefit? That's how economic development policies should work. And in using that, you're then able to go talk to private sector partners, both philanthropy and corporate, to say, hey, we as a municipality, we're putting skin in the game. We have adjusted our regulatory environment to make it easier to build, we've adjusted our economic development policies to make it less expensive for the types of product we know your workforce needs, or we know the folks that you care about the most, community foundation. Now, we need philanthropic investment, we need impact investment. Impact investment means I'm going to invest at a lower-than-market rate of return. And we need to think about public financing, right? Thinking about leveraging the ability to bond for infrastructure, to bond for development in some instances, not necessarily pledging the full faith and credit of the community, but pledging the new revenue that results from the building. And so, all of those things combined can start to solve for affordability in a pretty big way. So, here's an example, if we were going to build 75 apartment units, the general cost is going to be 20, 25 million dollars. I'm not going to get more than an 80% loan to value, right? For the most part, a bank isn't going to loan more than 80% of the cost of that project. That 80% loan at today's current 7% interest rate is going to cost me more than a million dollars a year in interest payments. But if I've got a lender who's willing to invest at 4% instead of 7%, I reduce my interest costs by $400,000 a year. And what I can do with that $400,000 here is pass it on to all 75 of those renters. That's a minimum $400 a month savings. But here's where it gets really exciting, is you don't have to say, okay, we're going to spread the peanut butter evenly across the whole piece of toast, and everybody gets a $400 a month cost offset. You can say, actually, we're going to make half of those apartments market rate, and we're not going to share any of that tax, or any of that interest savings with our market rate renters, because we know they can afford it. But instead of a $400 a month cost offset, we can offer an $800 a month cost offset to the other half of our renters. And being able to get creative with both our tax incentives and our public and philanthropic or impact investment is how we can start to make a really big impact. And so, lastly, one of the things that I really want to encourage here, as we think about the corridor strategy in West Michigan, one of the things that we really want to encourage strongly of our communities is to allow for buildings that are adaptable, that can be flexible over time, right? Because what we're learning right now is, from 1950 to about 1995, we built all of this single-family home product, and it's not adaptable. It's really hard to make a single-family house be something else. Not only because of politics, but because of the way they're designed, because the way they're situated on the lot, because of sometimes the infrastructure that serves them. And so while we still need more single-family product, and it's going to be a really important part of our housing mix for a long time to come, as we make public investments in additional housing, let's think about building types that can serve our market needs today. Because today, we know we have a lot of single adults and two-adult households that don't have the housing types that they need. In 15 years, the market is going to change again, right? And we're going to need, we might now suddenly need more family-oriented housing. So how do we build product where all you have to do is tear down a wall and two one-bedroom apartments become a three-bedroom unit? Or how do we build product that can adapt, right? It used to be, 75, 80 years ago, we had a lot of multi-generational housing, right? It was common, especially in rural markets, where you had three or four generations all living on the same property, and sometimes it was two or three homes all on the same property. We have totally eliminated that opportunity. And so starting to think about, how do we build housing that can be flexible and adaptable from generation to generation? And right downtown Traverse City is a great example, right? How many of these buildings were originally cute little retail storefronts with residences and offices above? I think probably at some point, there was a boarding house downtown Traverse. Anybody know for sure? Was there a boarding house? There was. Probably at some point, there were all kinds of uses that aren't in existence today, but the building was able to adapt. And so thinking about, how do we do that over the long run? So next steps, and this is next steps for any community, I'm not being prescriptive for you, this is what I always say, is think about, how do we update our regulatory environment to make it much easier to build the kinds of housing that we know we need in the community? How do we update our incentive policies to be really clear about what the community expects and then make it easy to meet that expectation? How do we leverage our tools like land bank authorities, land conservancies, community land trusts, all of those kinds of things? And then attract impact capital and public financing to deals where we know we're solving for the things that we most need? And partner with the private sector, right? So very often, we're working with nonprofits because those are the ones who are in the affordable housing space. But 96% of all housing gets built by for-profit entities. And so as much as I sometimes would like to philosophize and moralize about, oh, we really only want to give incentives away to nonprofits because they're the ones doing good, 96% of your product is getting built by for-profit companies. And that's the way the market works today. And so unless and until we get a whole lot more capacity in our nonprofit entities, we've got to be willing to work in partnership and alignment with the private sector. So with that, actually, before I do that slide, I want to note that Yaro is here in the room with Housing North. They serve the entire 10-county region. And Susan Lighthausier-Gee is our local housing readiness specialist for Grand Traverse County. She is your technical assistance resource specialist. She knows about all the tools that we've talked about here tonight and is available five days a week, generally. And then I'm putting her out there even though, you know, who knows? Ashley Hallidayschman runs the Coalition to End Homelessness. We didn't talk in a lot of detail about permanent supportive housing and SROs and all of the other kind of types of housing that are also needed for our most vulnerable households. We can talk about that in the Q and A session here shortly. But as we think about homelessness and households who are at risk of losing housing, Ashley is the primary go-to for the community. So now, we've got something that we sort of have planned to be interactive, but before we get into that, I want to give you an opportunity to get any questions that you've got. Yes, Madam Mayor?
I wanted them to bring the slide up that has all of these different tools on it. Because I think sometimes when we bring it up in meetings or we talk about it in meetings, first of all, as you kind of pointed out, the end, it's often first referred to as a handout to developers. But I think there's a perception that some of the, even the well-known names that help us with affordable housing projects are for-profit. But also, it's kind of, and I get it, it's for the public, it's kind of an alphabet soup, right? We've got NEZ, TIFs, and LI-TAC and everything else. And so I just wanted to have it up there for a minute so the public can see it as, when these come up, there really are meant for tools to help with housing crisis and not kind of some schemes by bankers and developers that these tools are kind of with a purpose. So really, just to kind of take a second and pause on that. I think I've talked enough for the camera, so I'll hand it back.
Great.
I just want to mention that, so when I did that series of interviews of planning directors, one of the questions that I asked, I said, planning and zoning is our favorite tools, but what else has it taken to get this done? And all but the two planning directors that were like, we're not building anything but single-family homes for rich people. Every other community was like, there are pilots, there is that new brand, I mean, just like, every community has to stack these up. And I know some, I don't know, I just want to say that for the benefit, sometimes when you're in a place, it feels like all the things are in the place, that it's just everywhere. This isn't, math isn't working anywhere. More questions?
When you showed the map of Grand Traverse County and all your data that you pulled from it, the one township that you left out was Blair. Sorry. The one township that was left out in all the data was Blair. Blair is one of the fastest-growing townships in the county, both commercially and with residents. And I was wondering if that was left out for a purpose or...
I can answer that.
Sure.
I put those slides together. So, and I'm sorry, that might have been an error. So when I pulled all the stats for the county, the individual communities, and I just like had Traverse City set as the baseline for the 800, however many new residents and what the percentage was, and then I just sorted. So I'm sorry if I missed Blair Township, but my understanding, the ones that I chose, the idea was that they were the ones that were growing faster than the city, either in terms of number or in terms of percentage.
I do a lot of work in Blair, and they're very friendly to work with. The township is excited about new growth and will help you through the process, which is really great. But the one problem they're running into is they've got a new development out by Chum's Corners that they're supposed to be putting in 240 housing units. But the sewer mains haven't been run. The sewer, I don't know about the city sewer plant, if it can handle it. And, you know, the infrastructure is not just a line or a road, or it's major. It could be, if we, it wasn't too many years ago, I know in Elmwood Township, we were looking at expanding some housing units, and city sewers, city said, look, we don't have the capacity. And so then it's a major, major to increase the size of the sewage treatment plant to accommodate that. So all these factors, I know you look at them and you say, oh, well, we could do this or we could do that. Even with mass transit, we, in the area, have just spent a huge amount of money for our beta bus system, just a huge. And all that really does is rents because it increases taxes.
Do you have a question?
Well, no, the question is, no, I guess I don't have a question. I'm making statements why stuff is so expensive, and you're just changing the burden.
Sure.
So I'm not sure that it's, I agree with you. Going up is great. I completely agree with that statement. I know it's expensive. And I think where the infrastructure is, it's important to go up. But the other thing that we deal with is water, water and environmental aspects. Sorry, no question.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I think that's a, oh, go ahead, Sean.
I just want to, hi, Sean Winters, City Planning Director. I just want to take this opportunity to clarify a very common misconception. Our regional wastewater treatment plant is only at about 50% capacity. Now, being a regional plant, there's a master sewer agreement. So each township that participates gets a share. So it's true, some townships may be getting close to their allocated capacity, but the plant is only at about 50% capacity right now. So just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, because we hear that a lot, and we just want to get that out there.
Yeah, that's super helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, Housing North is working all across the region, and we do have locations in Lelandaw County and in Benton County and portions of Grand Traverse County where the community is ready for growth, but there is no wastewater treatment system, right? There's no plant whatsoever. And building a new wastewater treatment system is really expensive. And so part of what we're doing with our zoning atlas and with our economic development analysis is trying to understand, what do we need in terms of new revenue in order to justify the cost of some of that infrastructure? And similarly for transit, what do we need in terms of new housing units and the share of folks who are likely to use transit in order to justify it, right? Because right now, I think you're absolutely right, transit here, transit in Grand Rapids, transit in Detroit, I think anywhere in Michigan, transit is a social service, right? It's not paid for by the riders, it's paid for by taxes as a social service. And the question is, do we have places where we would be able to have enough folks who would actually use it in order for it to be a sustainable initiative? And, you know, I think part of the reason we didn't spend a whole lot of time on that is it's not our area of expertise. It's sort of saying, hey, what we want to do is be able to solve for some people's concerns when we say we're going to build more homes on the same amount of acreage. And one of the ways we can solve for that is by allowing for people to get around in different ways, so that not every family needs two cars or three cars in the garage. Did I see another hand up? Any other questions before we make you do math? Yeah.
It's like Phil Donahue. Did anybody here remember Phil Donahue?
Hi, I'm in commercial real estate, so I'm aware of the real estate market. We're sitting on 60,000 square feet of office space, unused in this town, in the area. And we've started digging into conversion costs. What's it like in Grand Rapids at this point? How economically feasible is it to convert that space to residential housing?
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, it depends entirely on the building. So we've got, so when you convert office to residential, the way the building is designed, where the plumbing stacks are located, for office towers, even, you know, a four- or five-story building, oftentimes you've got an elevator core, and then around the elevators, you've got the bathrooms, but no plumbing in the rest of the building. And so if you've got 10-foot ceilings, you can put in a false floor and run new plumbing and electrical and still have a nine-foot ceiling in between. But if the building was built with nine-foot ceilings and you try to put a false floor in, suddenly you've shrunk your livable square footage down to eight or seven-and-a-half foot ceilings, and that feels really cramped. The other issue that we run into with office to residential conversion is sometimes you get a big floor plate. Most people don't want a bedroom without a window. Some people are willing to accept a bedroom with no window, especially third-shift workers. But a lot of people will say, you know what? If I'm going to rent an apartment or buy a condo in a building and I can't have a window in the bedroom, I'm going to pay half of what I would otherwise want to pay. And so those big office buildings where it's a really deep building, it's hard to convert those to residential and justify the cost. However, I would say probably a quarter of our vacant office space is prime for conversion. And now the only remaining challenge is we've got some office buildings that are like 60% vacant, but the 40% of the tenants that are still in the building have a commercial tenancy that might run another three years. And so the developers got to figure out, all right, what's the cost-benefit of breaking the lease and transitioning this tenant to a different building? What do I have to spend in tenant improvements to move them into that building? And then what am I going to be able to earn in terms of new rent for the conversion? But one of the buildings, I'm sorry for a long answer, this is a great, like, we can nerd out about this for a while. The 5th Third Building downtown Grand Rapids is a 12-story building that was just announced. It was the 5th Third Bank Building, had the old university club in it. It's got one remaining commercial tenant, and they're going to convert that to residential. But one of the reasons it's so conducive to residential, it's only got a 60-foot depth in terms of floor plate. So that means you can get roughly 25-foot units with a five-foot corridor or a six-foot corridor in between, and it works really, really well. So some stuff is happening, but not as much as we'd like. Yes, sir. Oh, I saw your hand earlier, and the microphone's right here.
You take that one and I'll walk you back.
I'm new here, so I apologize if this is naive observation, but would love your perspective. Source some data, I think it was in the DDA strategic plan that said, compared to other markets like Traverse City, Bozeman, and some other ones that are kind of hot markets right now, we have a very high rental percentage. And so I wanted to understand if that's true, and does that impact the housing market here? And then also the tax situation, which I understand is a Michigan thing, where, you know, nobody wants to sell their house, right? Because they, the appraised value, right? So nobody wants to sell. We keep letting everybody rent their homes, and then we have new developments going up in town, which appear to be rental apartments, so they're not even for full-time people. Like, how does that all play into our dilemma?
So now we're getting into the tricky stuff. Seasonal rentals is like a whole can of worms that we could spend all night talking about. So I'm going to put that one on the side burner for a second. The pop-up tax or the Headley Amendment, right? We've talked about the fact that your taxes don't go up by more than the rate of inflation and never by more than, I think, 3% or 5%. Five, thank you. And so, like, all of us who have been homeowners for a while are like, why would I ever sell? Because the next thing I buy, my taxes are going to be crazy. And the homeowner who buys my house is going to have crazy taxes. So we've done a disservice to ourselves in that way. When we have those big inflationary periods, really incentivizes everybody to just lock in, right? Like, nope, I'm not going anywhere because this is way more convenient. We've talked about some legislative bills that would allow for that pop-up tax to be mitigated, so that if you were to sell to a year-round, full-time resident, and maybe it would be income-restricted, that pop-up tax wouldn't necessarily jump all the way to full appraised value or full taxable value. It might only go up by 10% a year, which would give you an on-ramp to that full taxable value. It would still allow our local jurisdictions to eventually collect all of it. But we're starting to have some conversations with legislators about, you know, how might we make that easier? And it's not just something that's important in Traverse City, we're seeing similar things happening in the city of Detroit, right? Where you've got neighborhoods that have gone through some extraordinary investment periods, where people bought their homes for $10,000 or even for a dollar 10 years ago. And now their property's worth $400, $500,000 because they're in the midtown or the Corktown neighborhood. But they're low-income homeowners, right? And so they too are trapped in place. And so thinking about this, not just from kind of the northern Michigan perspective, but also our more urban communities are struggling with the same thing. We think we've got some opportunities to work on it, but the legislature moves. Do we have any legislators in here? The legislature moves slow. Go ahead.
Sorry, just to add.
Yeah.
Not a legislator. Not a legislator, but I have talked to legislators and MML, who represents municipals in Lansing. And while we have the issue, and Detroit's having the issue, a lot of regions don't. So that's been a little bit of an issue of getting them to move when a lot of regions are actually still really finding a benefit in that. So this is one of those moments where I would say, please email your state legislators and encourage them to keep it moving down the road.
Yeah, hi. Question about the Brownfield TIF incentive? If you're seeing some significant uptake in that since it's been introduced last year? And the second part of that, are you aware of any of these incentives on the screen that are implemented by a vote of the local electorate?
The Brownfield TIF program is like just kicking off. So it was fall before Mishda promulgated its guidelines to help people understand, how are we even going to use this tool? And then the first couple of deals were approved early in 2024. One of them was Bel Air Lofts in Village of Bel Air. And the other one Yaro mentioned earlier was also a northern Michigan project. What I'm seeing is everybody's interested. Both local municipalities and developers are trying to figure out, how do I use this? And projects are slow to come to fruition. Very oftentimes, we've got projects that have been kind of in the works for years. And because of price increases in terms of supply and labor that occurred throughout the pandemic, they shelved those projects. And now it's because of the housing TIF bill that developers are thinking, you know what? I might actually be able to revive this deal if the TIF is available. To your second question, I have never heard of a local municipality using a vote of the people to approve TIF. Maybe it's, right? Well, I guess I'll just... Well, I guess I'll just leave it at that. Haven't heard of that. Any other questions before we get into math? Sean?
Ryan, sorry, I should have asked you this earlier, but you mentioned Muskegon County.
Yeah.
So we heard from, I heard recently from a local MEDC employee that the city of Muskegon's doing some really cool things with TIF in housing. Can you talk about that if you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So Muskegon actually started using housing TIF before it was legal. Like, I don't recommend this strategy, but if anybody ever met Frank Peterson, the former city manager, he was just willing to go out on a limb. So if you're not familiar, housing tax increment finance, just a tiny primer, when you invest in a piece of property, most of the time you increase the taxable value. A developer has the ability to ask to capture some of the new value to reimburse eligible expenses. And it used to be those eligible expenses were only things related to contamination, lead and asbestos abatement, demolition, and installation of public infrastructure. Now you can also capture eligible investment related to new construction. So the actual hard cost of building a new building is an eligible expense that can be reimbursed over time using your tax payments. So in Muskegon, I think it was five years ago, Muskegon had a ton of property that was held by the Land Bank Authority. Because property values got so depressed during the Great Recession and didn't come back very quickly, the county held a ton of vacant lots and some single-family homes that were in disrepair. So they used the land bank and their brownfield authority, and they created a scattered site brownfield authority that basically said, we're going to put 100 housing units that are scattered across an entire neighborhood in one brownfield plan. We're going to go find a private builder who's willing to build new homes on those vacant lots, and we're going to allow for the new tax revenue that gets created as a result of that development to reimburse eligible expenses. And so it was in the process of them putting that plan together that the legislation was introduced. They adopted their brownfield plan, I think, like a few months before the legislature finalized the ink and, and governor actually signed the legislation. But they were well underway. Like, those houses were already starting to produce new tax increment. And so now they're, they're first out of the gate, they've got close to 100 units that have been built. Jake Akholm is the Director of Economic Development, who's kind of been spearheading that initiative. So if you want to talk to somebody about how to do that, Jake is the one. The one thing that I would say about Muskegon is their appraisal market is very different from Traverse City. So getting a new construction home to appraise in Muskegon was hard, and they had to really skinny down their budget. I think in Traverse City, you would want a different home design than the city of Muskegon was using, but the general concept still works really well.
I have one last question. In the state of Illinois, when I sat on the school board down there, they use developer impact fees to great effect.
Yeah.
In order to sort of offset some of the influx of new residents and new kids in the schools.
Yep.
We can't use that here in the state of Michigan, can we? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And an impact fee is basically when you build something new at market rate, in other localities, you can add a fee or a surcharge to the development. In Michigan, it's been prohibited by the legislature. So that is something that we're starting to look at to figure out, how might we allow for impact fees on a limited basis? But the House and the Senate are divided, right? We don't have unified government. It's hard to get legislation through. So we'll have more conversations with the legislature about that. All right, really quickly, because we told you you'd get out of here at 8:00, and it's almost 8:00. But I do want you to have some opportunity, and I'm not offended if anybody needs to go. That's totally fine. I won't cry about it later.
I might. Just kidding.
I might. But you didn't have to tell them. So one of the really important things I like to talk about when we discuss economic development tools is it's not a switch. It's not an on-off switch. It's like a mixing board, right? Anybody a musician in the room? One. I almost used a plane cockpit for this metaphor, and I was like, what are the chances somebody's a pilot? So a mixing board, like, you've got this series of dials, and I used to pretend that I knew how to play music a long time ago. I don't anymore. I have no idea what all those dials do. But an economic development professional often has a bunch of these tools in their toolbox that can be turned to one, or two, or six, or 10, right? And it's up to the local municipality and the Economic Development Board and the city council to decide, when are we willing to dial it to six, and when are we willing to dial it to 10, right? What are the conditions under which we're really willing to use all the tools in the toolbox? So I want to give you a math experiment that I want you to give us some feedback on. So I want you to pretend that the state of Michigan or the federal government HUD said, you know what, Traverse City, we know things are so hard for you, and we just want to give you some money. Here's $10 million to spend on housing, right? Spend however you want on housing. What would you do with it? And so what I want you to do is think about if, if you had $10 million that was generally unrestricted to, to build housing, and in your market, it costs $400 a square foot to build new housing. And so if you're going to build an 800-square-foot apartment, it's $2,500 a month rent. If you're going to build a 1,200-square-foot house, it's a $480,000 mortgage. And if we're going to subsidize those things, these are our subsidies, right? This is what we've got to come up with. How would we then use that $10 million in order to build housing? And so I'm going to, oh, and reminder, we've got to build about 11,000 units in total, right? 3,500 rental units, 7,800 for sale units. Okay. Everybody super excited about this math exercise? That's so optimistic. Okay. So if, if you were to say, you know what, I really only care about households, and I have heard this from several city councils before, I only care about households earning 50% median income or below. I prefer to only serve households earning 30% median income or below. How many households can I support? Well, $10 million would subsidize about 55 households, based on the subsidies that we would need under status quo environment. So that's about 3% of the households on the last slide I showed you that we need. I, I have no judgment about whether that's a good idea or not. Does anybody want to have a conversation about that level of subsidy for that number of units? Anybody feel strongly that, gosh, I got, this is important? Almost. And so I'm inviting you to interrupt me and to have, we're going to have some back-and-forth here. When, when you feel called to do so, or you could try to serve households earning 80% to 120% median income. So income ranging from 65 to roughly $100,000 a year. $10 million, we could build roughly 250 new apartments with subsidies so that we're getting rent in affordable range for those households. That serves almost 87% of that segment of the market. Not all of the housing need, just 87% of that segment of the market. So we get a little bit farther when we were thinking about those middle-income households, but we didn't really do anything to solve for our low-income households, right? I'm not going to pretend that, oh, we solved everything just by going to the next tier of the market. We just did what was easier to build more of. And so as, as you guys start to think about, okay, regulatory flexibility, economic development incentives, impact capital, you're going to be in a seat in which you've got to decide philosophically, are we going to invest more money in fewer households at lower income, or less money in more households at middle income? And there is no right answer, right? I, I can't tell you that this is, there's like a professionally accepted way to do this. Another alternative would be to support new owner-occupied units. I hear a lot of communities say, hey, we just want everybody to be homeowners. We frankly don't care as much about renters. We just want to get everybody into a, a home that they own. How do we subsidize that? $10 million would support about 32 new homeowners if they earn below $60,000 a year. Or if they earn between 100 and 120% median income, we could roughly double that. And again, this assumes status quo zoning. It assumes that we're requiring a 1,200-square-foot house in order to be built, and we're requiring kind of a larger lot size. Maybe there is some regulatory flexibility you want to bake in. Or we could use our $10 million to subsidize a bunch of new accessory dwelling units. And we could say, hey, if you're a moderate-income homeowner, or if you're willing to rent to a moderate-income renter, we're willing to provide a $40,000 subsidy per accessory dwelling unit. That would allow us to build about 250 new ADUs. Magically, that's about the same number of apartments that we could build under the 80% to 120% AMI scenario. And this might be my last one. Nope, there's one more after this. We could use $10 million to preserve existing housing. So one of the things that we often overlook is we often have a decent amount of existing, what we call naturally occurring affordable housing. And that's often like the 40-year-old apartment building where the carpet is still from 1985, and the wallpaper is still from 1985. And it's not a super sweet unit, but it might still rent for $900 a month because it's had a mom and pop owner for the last 40 years, and they know and care about their tenants. But that mom and pop owner is now in their 80s, and they are going to have to sell the building at some point. If somebody can step in and say, hey, we'll buy that from you, we'll make the minimum amount of improvements necessary to ensure that it remains code-compliant and keep the cost low, you could probably buy at least 100 housing units, maybe more, depending on what the property owner is willing to sell for. And then lastly, oh, no, there's two more. Housing Choice voucher, anybody familiar with the voucher program? Yep. So that's a portable golden ticket. If you remember Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, there was a golden ticket. Only about a third of eligible households actually get a voucher, but it pays for the difference between what you can afford in rent and what rent actually costs. You could create a local voucher program. We've got communities who have done this before. We could support about 330 families with a local voucher program, but only for two years. So it solves the problem for a minute, but then we run into the same issue. Or we could say, hey, we're going to extend a bunch of infrastructure where we know we've got a bunch of vacant available land. $10 million would allow for about one and a half miles of a different, of additional infrastructure. And the question is, okay, what does zoning allow for on that infrastructure? Can I build 150 units on one and a half miles? Or can I build 1,500 units on one and a half miles? That's really highly dependent on the local jurisdictions that it serves. So. Right? How annoying is this? It's a pain. The point here is, we're not going to solve for this with one thing, right? There is not a thing that I can promise to you, or that city council can promise to you, or that the state or the federal government could just do. Like, how often have you heard somebody say, well, if they just did this, we would be able to solve this problem? It's so complicated and interwoven. There's like 29 things that we have to do. And one of the things that I want to stress upon you is that we have to do them together. The city is not going to solve its housing crisis without the county and without the surrounding townships, and probably without the region as a whole, and probably not without the state, and probably not without some federal government support, and not without the corporate and philanthropic partnership in the community. And so the question becomes, of all of the bad scenarios I just showed you, how do you want to start to balance the regulatory environment and the incentives and the impact capital? And how do you want to pursue a community that wants to tackle all of those things together, so that 30 years from now, your kids and grandkids aren't facing the same issue or worse than we're facing right now? So with all that bad news, what I want to do is give you a moment to talk back to us about what are the things that you see in your community that you wish you had available, or that you would like to see pursued going forward? And we're going to give you five, 10 minutes and then let you go. No, you're all happy with?
Okay, I see you. Sorry.
I am a mom of five, and I not, well, I saw this posted on Instagram, and so when you asked, like, what do we do next? Part of me is like, I don't even know, like, how I got here exactly, but I would love to keep being in the conversation. So I'm not on any planning commissions. I'm not, you know, but I have five kids, and I hope that I have a plethora of grandkids one day. So I want to be in the conversation. I just don't know what that looks like when I leave tonight.
Well, that is great news. Thanks for coming. Start with that. What were you going to say, Ryan?
Yeah. I mean, one of the things I love is when we like recruit somebody new to this conversation. The first thing I want to ask of you is to have conversation with your friends, right? Is, if we're not directly impacted by these things, it's so hard to get engaged, because we've got after-school practices, and we've got PTA meetings, and we've got to make dinner, right? And all of the things. And so to get engaged, like, kudos to you for coming out tonight, on a Tuesday night. Thank you for that. And the next time you're hanging out with friends or family, if you've learned anything here, share it. Encourage anybody who's, might be willing to get engaged. Does the city have any way in particular for folks to get more engaged or learn more?
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways you can stay connected. If you go to the city website where we post our meetings, you can click on there, and whenever an agenda gets posted, it'll go up to your email, so you can see what's being discussed. And you can either come to the meeting in person, you can watch it on Facebook, YouTube, or on Traverse Area Community Media. Another great way is on the city website, you can sign up for the weekly Bay Brief. So it's an email newsletter that comes out every Friday. And our communication manager does a great job of keeping the public up to speed on various topics that the city commissioner, planning commissioner are looking at, and opportunities to participate.
Thanks again for coming. And it's not easy when you've got a house full of kids. I appreciate it.
My colleague Adam is doing some sketch noting. So as you see him drawing over there, he's kind of taking everybody's thoughts and ideas and turning them into sketches. We'll post those later. I see Chris. But Adam, Adam works for the D School of Design at Stanford and does community engagement and facilitation on a regular basis. We've been thinking about how do we cook up better community engagement processes, so that right now, the way people get engaged in public dialogue is often, they show up to one of these, or they show up to a city council meeting, and they get two or three minutes to say a thing, and then the board goes on and does their regular business. And it's not, it's not necessarily super meaningful for folks in terms of participation, and it doesn't always feel like you're being heard. And so I'm, I'm excited that Adam has been thinking about this, and I don't have something in particular to share yet. But I hope that in the near future, we've got some simple workshops that are kind of take-home kinds of things, and things that we can do together in community that make it easier to stay engaged without having to consume a bunch of your time.
In terms of a wish list, I would love to see us develop a community that you've been talking about, where there's, there's hundreds of them in the United States that are absolutely fabulous, that is 20 miles from here, so it's not a ridiculous commute that would accommodate the various levels, affordable town, exactly what you said. That's exactly what we need here, to accommodate the workers that we have, because we have a variety of wage levels. So would love to see that 20 miles from here.
Great.
How can we access the slides?
Oh, we'll make them available. I'll send them to Sean.
They'll go down with you at the [inaudible].
Okay, we'll get them on the website, make sure everybody can access them. Mayor's got to.
So a couple of things that I'm excited to see us continue working on is I know Yaro with Housing North has really started to coordinate, I think, something we've been looking for for a long time, of where everybody is in the region as far as housing needs, what they're doing, and opening up that dialogue a little. I think in the past, it's been a lot of, you know, somebody at the city saying, well, we want to do this, everybody come sit at our table. Or it's been, you know, somebody at Garfield saying, well, we're doing this, and we're doing enough. And it's, and I get it from all the perspectives, but I think having somebody who's understanding a lot of the housing policies coordinate it is going to, is going to be really helpful and really open that dialogue a lot more. And to the point that was just made, and thank you for coming here and just hanging out with us tonight, because you saw Instagram posts, that's amazing. But hopefully there'll be more of that, that I think, you know, sometimes we, and it was just mentioned, people look to us to have governmental meetings to do things, but I don't think governmental meetings are always the way to do it. Things like this, where we're here so we can hear people and be part of the conversation are good. But a business meeting on a Monday night isn't the best place to have these conversations, and it's just us hosting the meeting then, or it's just this county hosting it on a Wednesday morning. And, you know, that, I think that's a better way for us to do. I also know that Sean's been working with the other planners in the region to kind of taking stock and inventory of what's coming online and what things are doing periodically. And so I also thank him and think that's another great way to go, because it can sometimes feel like, as a city commissioner, we're the only ones doing anything for affordable housing. And I'm sure that feels the way in some of the other districts, too. So I, I think as long as we can continue doing those as well, that's a good start for pulling all all of this stuff together.
Yes, I'm not saying that this is necessarily something for local government to solve or something that requires the cooperation of a lot of partners, but you did comment that there has been a decrease in capacity for building generally since the Great Recession, and that framing and other construction costs are significantly higher here than, say, Grand Rapids. So have any communities or regions tried to invest in expanding that capacity, say through their vocational trades program or through offering incentives to new construction firms?
Yes. So we are seeing in both the Flint area and the Grand Rapids area, we're seeing a strong increase in community college vocational programs for skilled trades. And what we're starting to see is the Home Builders Association get involved in trying to advocate for more high schoolers to go into the skilled trades. One of the things that we've been talking about is, how do we create basically a skilled trades program that can lead into an MBA? So that you can go become a plumber, and in your first 10 years, you can also earn an MBA, so that instead of working as a journeyman, you can become your own business owner. And part of what we have to be able to do is allow young people to see the potential for profitability in the skilled trades, instead of a, well, you know, I couldn't get into U of M, or I couldn't get into Northern, and so I guess I'm just going to go into the trades. It's actually, it can be a really lucrative business, and we need to start to talk about it in that way. And we haven't done a good job of that for, frankly, the last generation.
Yeah, I think we all learn when we fail, right? We learn from our mistakes. And failing teaches us what to do better in the future. But I would challenge everybody to also look at when we succeed. And there's a, there's a great demonstration project that the city was involved in, the county was involved in, and the state provided funding to fill a gap, and that was the Carver Street Apartments. And I think we can take that, yeah, it's only, it's only 10 minutes, 10 units, but it's being built out right now as we speak. Of, that's a great example. We saw at the county level, county land bank, Brownfield providing funds, the city issued a pilot for that, for that project, and the state stepped in and provided the missing middle, funds from Mishda. And I think that's something, we kind of, we kind of forget about where we succeed. We move on to the next project. And it's important to go back and look at projects like that and say, hey, you know what? We learned something here. We learned that we can collaborate to solve our region's problems.
Thank you.
Boy, that's a great note. I almost want to end on that, but we've got one more.
Is that one more?
Yes. Hi, I'm Susan Lighthizer with Housing North, and I am the Housing Ready Tech Support Person for Grand Rapids County. That is a new position, but a lot of what we're doing is kind of matchmaking, collaborating, trying to bring parties together to disseminate information. And, you know, to your point about, you know, celebrating the successes, if it can be done in one place, it can be done in another place perhaps. And so sharing those successes and what is working well, you know, throughout the 10 county region so that we can, so there's less of trying to reinvent the wheel. And for folks who are just interested, let me give you my card so that you can stay kind of connected to the issue and get updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get everybody?
All right, so being from Grand Rapids, I can't not talk about pyramid schemes. If you guys are all willing to bring one or two other people into this conversation, it's, yeah. Seriously though, the time that you've invested tonight, and I'm guessing the time that you've invested in your careers in this issue is really important. I'm going to consider all of you to be subject matter experts to a certain degree at the thing that you know the most about. And the fact that you're here says a whole lot to me about how much you care about the issue. And it doesn't mean that we probably all agree about everything that we talked about tonight, but being an advocate in the community matters. And so if you're willing to take time to have conversations with people in your daily lives, the people that you work with, the people that you see at the gym, or that you play pickleball with, right? All of those conversations matter at the end of the day. And ultimately, it's going to take the entire community to shift the trajectory of the system, right? Because we've talked about all of the layers that get in the way. And it's really hard when you've got seven leaders who are trying to make decisions for 15,000 people, for them to make everybody happy. But the more they know they can count on you to be out there in the public, having these conversations and helping people to understand how complicated this can be, and that it's not just, oh, well, we made this decision, and now either everything broke or everything's fixed. It's, we're making incremental changes over time that we hope over a generation can solve for these problems. So I really hope that you spend time with your communities and begin to engage more and more people in the issue. Leah and I will hang around, I think some of the community members will hang around if you want to have more private conversation at the end. But thanks for coming out. I appreciate your time.[1776.03]